I'm going to call this regular city commission meeting to order on August 18th at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Skatarsik.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
So Commissioner Malley is absent. Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Lovett.
Here.
Just getting, uh...
Yeah.
Prayer and...
Yeah, moving on to the prayer. Pledge of Oasis, gentlemen, please rise.
And I'm not Reverend Donovan, I am Chaplain Lovely.
I didn't say that one.
No, but it says that in the thingy there. A quote from Albert Einstein, "A man of faith and science. Coincidence is God's way of remaining anonymous." We know that God is always present, let us bring ourselves into awareness of that presence that we might pray together. Let us pray. Holy God, Source of all that is, and Keeper of the vision for humanity, you alone know our hearts, our desires, and our openness to your purpose for us. Guide us, lead us, past the obstacles of our own limited understanding, that we may draw ever closer to that vision, and with our courage and your wisdom, make decisions in harmony with your good and perfect intentions for us, through Jesus Christ, our Savior, and model of godly living. Amen.
Pledge of Oasis.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since we've already done the roll call, just messing with the order here a little bit tonight, I'll go to communications. We've got 4A, which is pending agenda items. We've got 4B, Michigan Municipal League. Item 4C, MDT Training Wheels Event Communication. Item 4D, City of St. Clair Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance, that they're going to maybe bring up again. And item 4E, Michigan Municipal Executive's Letter.
Make a mo...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Make a motion to accept communications and place them in file.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're accepted. Moving on to the public comment portion of this meeting, you're invited to come to the podium and address the commission. Please state your name and address, and keep your comments to under five minutes.
Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. Mr. Mayor, I was reading with interest not too long ago the mayoral candidate profiles in The Voice, and was surprised not to find a couple of profiles listed there. Surprised further to find a note at the bottom that you had declined the paper's request for information. Your closing comment at the last meeting, you indicated that you had not been contacted by The Voice, either by phone or by email. Later that... Later, I learned that when you contacted The Voice, someone from the staff replied that it was not their job to chase politicians. This has to be the first time in history that a member of the free press in a democracy claimed it was not their job to chase politicians. If it's not carved in stone somewhere, it certainly is the unwritten duty of a free press in a democracy to fairly and openly report on the goings-on of politics and politicians. Not to include all of the candidates in this case comes off as a blatant endorsement and free political advertising, rather than open and fair reporting. If the press wishes to endorse a candidate, they should do so on the editorial pages, and give their reasons for doing so. I hope, moving forward, The Voice will make every effort to cover local politics, candidates, and elections that are inconsistent with the high estate that they hold. On another note, on a previous commission meeting, this body shot down a suggestion to drop the current cable TV contract in term... in an effort to retain more money in the general fund. I've got no axe to grind regarding CTV. However, no effort was made by this body to suggest and debate alternatives. I can think of five. Instead, the member of this condition... this commission conducted a love-in for the current provider. Commissioner Hendricks actually smiled. That alone was worth the price of admission. We're doing RFQs for other city services. Why aren't we doing one for CTV? Similarly, little more was done to address the hemorrhage from our recreation department. It, too, was passed down the road again. Commissioner Malley, I don't disagree with you when you say it's nice for Marine City to provide recreational activities for surrounding communities, but perhaps, sir, you could find a way to fund this largesse. You've passed a balanced budget for the year. That doesn't mean you get to sit and pat yourselves on the back. The city manager, in her forward to the current budget, stated and underlined, "This budget is not sustainable for the long term." There's no reason why you can't revisit, revise, review both the budget and the fee structure for the recreation department. Effective management requires that policies and practices be continuously reviewed and revised toward the goal of better results. Current financial state of our city requires and demands better results.
My name is Louise Butel. I live at 535 North Main. There is a saying that we ask forgiveness for those things which we have done, but we also ask forgiveness for those things which we have not done. And I think, in the instance of The Voice, they particularly can cover both fields. I found it sad that there was such uneven coverage, for a number of reasons. First of all, what happened is now past. We now have a general election coming up. But the seeds of what was planted by The Voice remain. And what remains is people thinking what might have happened. That our current mayor simply didn't have the energy to talk to The Voice. That our current mayor didn't really want to be mayor anymore. That our current mayor is so arrogant that he really didn't need anything in The Voice about him and about his background. This is no way, in our current world, to start an election. The Voice needs to start over, first of all, on the front page, where this whole thing started. They need to apologize to both candidates, even though Mr. Dawes is no longer in the election. Nevertheless, he was skipped. Mayor Skatarsik is in the election, and he needs to have a full-page review of all of the things that he has done. And The Voice needs to apologize for leaving a bitter taste in the mouths of many of us. It's wrong. This city has many things that we have to do that are important. We have to work together as citizens, as members of the commission, as city manager, everyone, all of us have to work together, but we have to have an even starting point. Now, for the rest of this election, I hope that that's going to happen. Now, if The Voice has real difficulty in reaching members who are running... candidates who are running for office, Chris Baxter can be reached at City Hall. Of course, you could look on the City of Marine City Facebook page and find email addresses, et cetera, but if you don't want to do that, you could just pick up, you know, those old-fashioned telephones, maybe a cellphone, or maybe even one that's wired, and you could dial 810-765-8846, and you could ask for Chris. Or you could ask for a member of the staff at City Hall. There's more than one person there, and they do answer their telephones. Please do this. And please, all of the people who are living here in Marine City, for goodness sakes, go out and vote. Vote, vote, and let's hope that The Voice will give you an even picture of all of us who are running. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Haas?
Bill Haas, 203 Pleasant, 215 Harold Street. I believe a week and a half ago, I wrote something into you.
No, it was that one. I got it.
You can write down a new number, 161214. It's a police report from the other day. I couldn't get a copy of it, because supposedly it's still an open case, because, you know, my neighbors were the people are deceased, and the people moved in. You know, I'm out cutting, cutting the trees down, this, that, the other thing. I had to cut the damn big tree down if I, you know... The tree is real close to the property line. I had the officer I came out with, I didn't say nothing to Mr. Hasseloff the other day, but I don't believe officers, you know, you've got x-ray vision. I guess he could see the stake underneath the car tire that's been flat, sitting there for a year and a half. Then he proceeds to talk about, yeah, it looks like the tree's on her property. I don't think that's what he was supposed to do. April 25th, I got pictures on my phone from when they tomahawked the tree up. I called, had the woman please come out. She didn't even take pictures. At least the guy who come out took some pictures. So if there's discrepancy in pictures, I got them on my phone, April 25th, they're all digital though. You know, I mean, $1,400 for a survey. I've already gone through this because city's DPW at 211. I'm sure if you guys got four, six hours, sit down and talk about 211, my neighbor for quite a while, with Mr. Hasseloff, I'm sure that would be pretty damn amusing, too. I get accused of not getting along with some of my neighbors. I got neighbors who moved in, got no respect, don't even know the law. At least I knew the law and the damn tree. Got the 222, finally got rid of that problem for Mr. Hillthing, so he don't have any mosquitoes sitting in the boat filled with water next to his damn porch. But even if I, you know, I did the $1,400 survey already, which is, my lady wasn't whining, about $1,400 bucks, just to take care of business, put a fence down damn between the thing. You know, actually, maybe, being as I'm being halfway calm here today, the mayor might be able to talk to his buddy Keith Jenkins, couple doors down, being as he builds houses in our town. I believe if I did my research right back in the day, when I was the city of Marine City page with the Palins, I believe Patrick Palin works for a survey company. Maybe somebody's got backgrounds with somebody, I can find a survey for 500 bucks. Like I say, when I did it for 211, 203, did my other house, because the city, you know, our DPW works, got part of a driveway approach on my property. You know, so they think it's a driveway. Keeps talking about cement. As soon as the cement comes, I lay the fence dressed away. But even if I would've spent the $1,400 to get a survey, the damn truck that's sitting on top of the property line with the flat tire for the last year and a half, am I supposed to do, put my three-quarter ton and some chains, just drag it the hell out of the way, so the surveyor can come do his job? Or I'm not sure how that shit works. But like I said, you know, you've got some other things on your deal, and don't worry, Mr. Mayor. Should the fire guy beat you? There's Larry Simon on the fire board with one of his properties I'm not too impressed with these days.
May I ask you to clean up your line?
Hey. But, you know, I'm just curious. You talk about Joe Moran says making money for the city, plenty of ways to make money for the city. I don't know if we're on it, you know, like I say, like a smoker, you smoke pack, you quit, you come back, too. I got no problem footing two trucks and trailers downtown with signs. Like I say, I'm just asking for them to clean up, like I told them. If you guys would take care of the blight and the garbage, I wouldn't have a damn problem. Wouldn't have a problem. Look.
Does anyone else like to come to the podium?
Dave Anabash, 214 South Bow River. I'm just here to thank the community. The other day, we had a fire. We assisted St. Clair in a fire at the DTE plant, and the outpouring of support we got was impressive. About an hour and a half after our first crews went up, we started relieving, receiving donations of water, Gatorade, and energy bars. We just would like to thank the community for all the support we got. It makes the job a lot easier when we know we get the community's support behind us. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else like to come to the podium?
Michael Frank, 218 Pleasant Street. I wasn't going to speak about this, but since two people marched up here to cheerlead, basically, our mayor for not responding to The Voice's request for a comment, to say that somehow it's The Voice's fault because he chose not to respond, or that they're somehow lying, that is ridiculous. I mean, it's not... Obviously, a paper has a reputation to uphold, and, you know, if that was the case, if they didn't try to contact you at all, then I doubt they'd be making those comments. They'd be pretty open to a lawsuit if that were the case. And if that is the case, I would encourage you to pursue that, because your reputation absolutely was tarnished. But I don't think that was the case. I think they emailed you, they had your city email, and it got lost, whatever happened to it. I don't know. But I'll say that. As far as this closed session tonight with purchase of real property for the city, I don't know what that's about. Mr. Simpson here didn't know that what was that, what it was about. To me, that's the epitome of what should be discussed in an open session, what kind of property the city is trying to purchase. I don't know, I just like to request some kind of transcript, or something be made available for the public, so we can know what you guys are talking about in here, because we need better transparency. That's actually one thing that I do agree with Joe Moran on, transparency. And people are sick and tired of it, sick and tired of these closed-door meetings, these things happening, decisions being made, without them having to say so, or them, you know, hearing what's going on. And while I'm on transparency, Commissioner Lovett, as a lot of people probably know, our house has been for sale for a couple months, few months now. It's no longer on the bachelor's website, the bachelor's realtor's website. There's no first... there's no sold sign on the sign, but since it's not on the website, and I've heard chatter that it is sold, I'm just, I guess, wondering exactly when you'll be stepping down, and if maybe the public will have any input, ability for input on who the replacement would be. I think the people would really appreciate that, since you have two more years left. And that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your board. Item 7A, approval of the minutes of the regular city meeting of August 4th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the city commission regular meeting of August 4th, 2016.
Motion, support. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed? Say nay? Thank you. You guys are just messing me up today. It's just like you're playing with my mind. Item 8, we got the consent agenda. Item 8A, we have a business license for the shop on the corner. Item 8B, special event for Heritage Days. Item 8C, department activity reports. Item 8D, Marine City Fire Authority run report and agenda packet.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda and place them in file.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention our building departments report. Our new building inspector is moving forward, and under code enforcement, she's addressed 95 violations. It's going to take her some time to get through everything, because she's part-time. She does building inspection, she also does code enforcement, but at least it's finally moving forward. But you have to understand, first, she has to send one letter, and then she has to wait, and then she has to send another letter, sometimes a third letter. So give her a little slack here, because she's finally on it. Deal with her if you've got some issues, but again, her starting out hitting 95 violations, it's pretty good, I think, for, you know, and I think she... I don't know if she's doing it by section, or if she's doing...
She's utilizing the sections that we set up for the sidewalk program.
Sidewalk.
Yeah. So she's gradually working her way through, and she's hitting the worst stuff first, and then eventually she'll be coming back. So if someone gets a code violation, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's everything at that point, it's just the worst that she's focusing on primarily.
But at least she's, you know, she's getting started on it.
And if you do see a problem, or you are concerned about something, do call, because she was very responsive, and you get, again, remembering that she's part-time, but at the same time, she does get back to you in a reasonable amount of time, so do make that call. Don't you say, well, you know, we've got a violation, or, you know, I don't like what's happening. Call and make a report.
Anyone else? You might want to go online and download the packet, because it was... I was very encouraged when I saw her report also. Looks like we finally have somebody that's going to go out there and do her job.
Like I said, our last minute, she's proactive in making recommendations to us, and I can't remember at any point, since I've been following things, that anyone's made a recommendation. So not only is she proactive in doing the job, she's proactive in looking how we can better that position and better our ordinances for the future. I think that's absolutely great.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda's been approved. We have no unfinished business. Item 10A, which is a police department recognition.
Having me. Little backstory here is, normally every December, we have a department meeting. It's like our Christmas party, it's our little get-together, and that's usually the night that we hand out our awards. Well, I think some of these awards go unnoticed by the public, and you really don't get to see what kind of, you know, job the officers do. So the Saturday night of the festival... Dave Spence? Come here. Detective Spence and Sergeant Westrick, he could not be here tonight, he had a family emergency, so he could not make it. They were partnered up and on patrol. Approximately 12:12 AM, they were checking the area of the boat launch. During the patrol of the area, they heard people talking and laughing from the river. Upon shining the spotlight into the river, they observed several people floating down on what appeared to be either a raft or overturned boat. After several attempts to make contact with these people, they learned that a Boston Wheeler had in fact overturned, and the individuals were in need of help. Sergeant Westick and Detective Spence radio dispatched to notify them of the situation. They then requested help from our fire authority. Eventually, the individuals had made it to shore just south of the city limits. All five individuals were accounted for and refused medical attention. During the conversation, one of the subjects lost consciousness and stopped breathing. We believe it was an asthma attack. Detective Spence administered first aid and was able to get the subject's breathing. Your diligence and patrol and keen sense of observation are truly appreciated. Our general order 506 states, "The life-saving citation is awarded to an officer who is directly responsible for the saving of a human life." I believe that night, he saved five. Your actions have brought credit to the City of Marine City, the Marine City Police Department, and yourself. I hereby award you the Life Saving Medal. With sincere thanks, me. Thank you.
Which is, item A, disbursements including payroll.
Make a motion to approve disbursements including payroll of $523,121.49.
Bit of motion, support. Any discussion or questions on disbursements? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Skatarsik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 11B, preliminary financial statements.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary financial statements as presented.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, city manager's report.
See, this week, I attended the TIPA meeting and the fire authority meeting. Out of the TIPA meeting, they did approve becoming members of the Economic Development Association. That's something that they had been out of since the downturn, and they felt that with all the work that they've been doing with the hotel and other projects, and some of the stuff that they've seen EDA doing with other communities, they felt it was beneficial at this time. The demo for the Turhune's Building is scheduled to start on the 26th of this month. International Construction with Shelby Township was the firm that was selected to do the demolition. Our contractor, Envirologic, is going to be onsite throughout the demolition, they'll have a representative there. RFPs for IT consultants have gone out, those are due the day after Labor Day, so hopefully I'll get some good response from that. I also had a meeting with Erica Lange, the executive director with the Chamber, and she is interested in being more of a partner with the city, and one thing that we may be seeing from her in the future is some quarterly reports, just letting city commission know what's going on with the Chamber. That's all I got.
Commissioner Hendrick.
All right, okay. One item on the rec department that was brought up, we gave our rec department person a year to try to resolve any issues with that rec department, so it wasn't like we weren't doing anything with that. First, I'd like to give my condolences to the Bovee family. Robert Bovee recently passed away. He gave a lot to this community, served 32 years on this board, and he always had the community's best interests at heart, and he will be greatly missed. The next one I want to do is, I want to thank the men and women of our fire department for the great job they did in responding to the DTE fire. These people all work a normal job, and then spend many hours training and responding to calls for our community. This was the big one. They and all the other departments did a wonderful job on an extremely hot day, working together on a major incident. This is when all of their training pays off. Everyone came home safe, and we can't thank them enough. And it was also nice to see the people in the community stepping up to provide food and water to the responders, I know they really appreciate it. The last one is, I'd like to thank Melissa and Bob Blanch, and all their volunteers for the hard work on the festival. The fireworks were the best. You all did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Commissioner Avery.
I also would like to add congratulations to the maritime festival activity, including the DPW work, who had the streets opened very soon, and I saw the committee members working right away, so the disruption to the city was minimized. I got the impression from walking around on all the days that the festival went very well, so that was very good for the city. That's all I can think of.
I'd also like to echo Commissioner Hendrick's comments in regards to the first responders that responded to the DTE. I was out of town at the time, and I just started watching the Facebook feeds, as people were posting, and then, you know, the Channel 7 helicopter view of everything, and it just, you know, I stood up very late that night, kind of trying to follow everything, and then chat with people that were local, and I just, I can't imagine someone that, you know, chooses to do that in a volunteer capacity. Again, you know, you mentioned everyone, you know, it's, they have their day jobs in their family life, but let alone to come to, you know, an event like that, and that just is just growing beyond anyone can imagine. And I just, you know, thankful to have, you know, great people in those positions, and thankful that we have a department that has wonderful procedures and is looking after things. You know, I think what that shows is that, that, you know, a lot of people, and I heard... a lot of people in our area are doing things right. You know, when something that terrible happens, and people can get out, and people can, you know, fight the fire or fight the tragedy safely, it shows that a lot of mechanisms and training are really in place, that that's all these little things that no one ever sees going on in the background. And I think that's, you know, it shows that everything we have is really working right. And, you know, those comments go to the, our first responders and all the hard work that they do, so personal thank you to everyone there. I think Mr. Hillfrank left, but he was looking for, you know, public comment, if and when we should have to replace the city commissioner, but I just want to remind everyone that if we're faced with that position, we have an established methodology of doing that, where we receive not only input from the community, but they would fill out an application, and it's then appointed to this board. So we have an established procedure for that. So of course, we would announce that at a meeting, and would solicit the applications and discuss those at a meeting. So we do have an open, established procedure for that in place. One last thing too, we, a long time ago, and for a good deal of time, I've been talking about the fix-it tickets in regards to blight, and I would hope that maybe in the next month or two that we might be able to maybe start that conversation, now that we have Susan in who's doing a great job of doing that. It takes a while, I think, to change those procedures, and I think if we can at least start that conversation of what that might look like, if we think that, you know, a fix-it ticket for blight instead of having to, you know, go through citation after citation or letter after letter. Again, this was something that I found important here on at a workshop, that they said worked very well, and I think we could do something similar, not exactly, but everyone that I've talked to about it says it really eliminated a lot of their time between the original citation and compliance, and that's ultimately what we're looking for. We don't want to make money off of people, we want compliance. I think that's what we can come to agreement about. But I know it takes a long time to deal with these issues, so I think if we could maybe have that at, you know, maybe something in the fall, that way, come next spring, we have something nice, neat and tidy in place that we can start dealing with, you know, a lot of these things. Because I mentioned just spring because so much of this comes up in nicer weather. So I would hope that we might be able to, you know, have that on an agenda and have some discussion, you know, sooner than later.
Say a couple things. One thing I do want to say, really thankful for Bob and Melissa Blanchard. The maritime days was very successful, and it goes to show you, with a small town, when they get together, you don't necessarily have to have a carnival to attract people. Just our town itself brought in a lot of people, where they were impressed by a small town growing and striving, and it's looking good. We are looked upon as being a frontrunner for our area, and it's really a delight to see when people get together, how it all come, it makes our town look excellent. And I also want to say, diddle with the fire department as excellent coverage, and it's just an honor to have our police, our fire department come up to speed and do their job with full force as though they were full-time employees. And the other thing is, I was listening to the radio when WJR made a comment, I guess the Olympic Canadian guy that won the medals, they gave tribute to Marine City, and I feel like, wow, they gave us brothership, you know, being a Canadian, and gave us the honor, and I really appreciate that support, the radio station giving Marine City the respect, you know, of a true, like, American, as if like they're an adopted brother. The Canadians are an adopted brother to us. But it just made, it just was a good feeling hearing our name on the radio.
Thank you.
Okay, just give it over here. Okay. Again, and it's said, been said, but we are very blessed with the community to have three wonderful men heading the service departments with Chief, Police Chief Heslop, and the Fire Chief, Joe Slangster, and DPW Superintendent Mike Ittrich. Our town is in great hands, so thanks, all three of you, for the wonderful work and the consideration that you give to this community, not only your time, but your lives, and helping saving our lives too. Sergeant? Chief? Anyway, Mr. Spence, I'm sure of the right title, sorry. Let's see, there are just a couple issues I think we need to look at, and one is the fence ordinance. I had mentioned it to our city manager, but I thought I'd bring it up here, is we have no consideration in our ordinance for those items that are already in place, that we're starting forward, we're not going back on doing what was, what had been done already. So I think that ordinance needs to go back to the planning commission to...
A new ordinance only affects...
You can't go back.
Yeah, you can't go back, that would be illegal and improper. So a new ordinance can only affect what's going forward.
Then that discussion needs to be held because there is some discussion with that regarding our present person in that position. Okay? So that, we do have a grandfather clause that is not in the ordinance, and she does not see it as being there. So there've been some issues lately on that. So I think we need to deal with that before it becomes a real problem. And then, secondly, the, there was one more here. Oh, I believe our city manager has been here for a year now, and it is, we need as a commission to consider that evaluation period. Commissioner Hendrick and I had developed that last year. If you want us to look it over, I'd be very happy to, or if you're happy with it, but I think that's something we need to look at too. Okay? And then, thank you to everyone who has made our community and our streets so colorful with all the plannings that are around the community, lots of hydrangeas. At one point, we thought maybe Marine City could become the hydrangea capital of Michigan, like Mackinac is the Latin capital, but that was just an aside. Thank you.
Yeah, I too want to offer my condolences to the Bovee family. They're also neighbors of mine, they live two houses down, so I've gotten to know them very well over the past twelve years. Wonderful family, wonderful man. Loved the outdoors, loved to hunt fish, made cabbage and grape bean soups, and the best neighbor you could possibly have. And this community owes him for the thirty-two years of service on the commission, and he was also one of the holdout commissioners that preserved our historic downtown, and survived recall back then. So he's been very important to our community, and he's gonna be deeply missed. And I echo the sentiments everyone about our fire department and police department, our first responders are top-notch. Thank you, guys. And the DPW had to step up too, because the fire guys were putting so much stuff in the water, that they had to hurry up and shut down our intakes to protect the public safety. So they did an excellent job too, the DPW. I got notified by Mike a couple of times about the situation. They were able to switch over water and support St. Clair and East China, because their water departments had to shut down. So it was a good job by everyone involved in the city, so thank you, everyone. Closed session. I know Mr. Hillfrank would like to make this look like we're up to no good. Closed sessions are only held for very specific reasons, and usually it's because it's some type of negotiation, that if it was done in public, it would put the city in a bad position, or a diminished position, something that could cost the city money, and that's the only time we're allowed to do it. I'd like to let everyone know, no decisions are ever made in closed session, so it's not like there's things going on there that you won't know about. Whatever, any decisions that come out of the discussion in closed session will be made at a public meeting. The Voice Paper. I don't want to start a war with the Voice Paper. They've been extremely good to this community. Jerry Packer's been an excellent resource for us. I am very disappointed with their coverage. I have been letting them know I've been very disappointed with their coverage. I do believe they did send an email out to me, and I probably missed it. The, well, I know I missed it. The exception I take with their coverage was to say stuff like, you know, decline to respond, you can only decline to something that you actually know about. And I have discussed this with Jerry, who would have normally been doing this, and in the past, she's, if she didn't get a response to something like that, she knows how important it is, she would at least have made a phone call and say, hey, did you see this email? So I was very disappointed with that, but am gonna let it go until the paper came out in the 10th, and then the newest big article on the front, where my opponent was mentioned a little bit more prominently, and interviewed, and a spotlight comment was made, and I was never called by the paper, which, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but if you're the mayor incumbent, and you're in election, and you're doing a post-election coverage, it seems to me that should be part of the story. So, again, I like to say, the Voice has been very good to this community, I don't want to start a war, hopefully the coverage will get better. I think what's happening right now is there's a little bit of void in their personnel because of Jerry Packer moving on, so hopefully it all gets straightened out pretty soon.